Not hard to do. They got people bring donkeys on, small donkeys and turkey. The turkey, you seen the turkey?
The federal government just has two miniature horses.
You seen one of the turkey?
No. I didn't know that.
It's hysterical.
Walter.
Yeah, and they also did the pigs.
Yeah.
That's what me. Listen, it could have been his date.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It is three p.m. Thursday, June 16, 2016. Time for the meeting of the Gateway Services Community Development District Board of Supervisors. Please stand and join us in a pledge to our flag and country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment in silence in remembrance of the victims of the terrible attack in Orlando earlier in the week. Thank you very much. Please be seated. Mr. Manager, do we have any folks that would like to speak to the board this afternoon?
Yes, sir. Mr. Ed Tinkle on agenda and non-agenda items.
Thank you. Ed Tinkle, 111-80 Ben Pine Drive. The agenda item is the Hammock Cove issue, and I'll just hold off on that unless there's any questions. I have transmitted all the documentation I've got regarding that situation to April. Couple of things. Issue one, April and I have talked, I've talked to Danny, talked to Tyler, and I want to make sure that I understand this right, is this GIS mapping. I thought that you all had approved, like as I recall, we had like three phases or four phases that we were going to do over time, and I thought one of the phases that we had authorized was getting the utility mapping done. There seems to be some confusion as to whether Dave has done the mapping, doesn't know how to do the mapping, hasn't started the mapping, but we could use the mapping here in Gateway. And I'm just trying to find out, what do we need to do to light a fire to get the mapping? Specifically, I'd like to have stormwater, but we're going to need water sewer and irrigation someday, but I thought you all had authorized that work. So, just a question to check on. I think April has been, is working on that. Next item, street signs, and again, I've talked a little bit about this to April, but after you and I talked, there's even more confusion on it. We're in the process, or as you know, we've had six or seven streets that WCI is going to quitclaim deed to you all, which are the ones that were left out there in no man's land, that were not a part of the turnover to Lee County, which is Eagle Point and Commerce Lakes, Drive East, and West Links, and Commonwealth, just to name a few. I went out to look at those, and in preparation of a meeting next Wednesday, because I'm not going to be able to be here for that site inspection, but trying to get an idea of what we got, well, lo and behold, the stop signs out there are a hodgepodge of different signs. We have some that are the green or the black, the new ones we've got, and we have others that are still the white ones. I talked to Tyler, and I know April and I had a discussion about it because of the fact that, well, if they were going to remain the white signs, some of the white ones that are coming down off the Boulevard might be able to be used as a backup. But Tyler tells me, as far as he's concerned, if there's going to be a turnover of those roads to the CDD, that would be inclusive of meeting the MUTCD requirements, which are, the signs have to be seven-foot clearance instead of six-foot. In other words, like the ones we've got now on Gateway Boulevard and Griffin and Commerce Lakes. And he's of the opinion that all of those are going to be changed over, which means the white ones, you'll have a bunch of white ones left over, which I'd like to get first dibs on, to use in our community if you're not going to use them. But it seems to me there's a confusion on that, because when I talked to Rick Brylansky, he wasn't aware that that was a deal. He thought that was between you guys and WCI, so I guess the question is, who's on first? Are the street signs a responsibility of the entity that has them, i.e., we would have the ones on Griffin Drive at the beginning where we own the section, we'd have the part up by the pool, and we'd have the part up by Stony Brook. All the rest, everything left, plus the six or seven local streets, would be WCIs. Does anybody have a recognition of what, or a recollection of what? Who's doing what? Tyler says he is not going to stand before you guys and suggest taking over those roads until all those signs are changed, because they're not compliant.
Mr. Newbauer, did I hear you?
Two things. Number one, if they don't meet the criteria, I would certainly recommend that we're not going to take them until they do, so that the entire community is standardized. But a second question arises too, that we don't have a policy for, at least I don't know of one. What if, after these are done, on these streets that are quitclaim deeded to us, or neighborhood streets, Stony Brook, et cetera, is the entirety of Gateway responsible to replace those signs? Should they fade at a later date? Should they be knocked down by a car at a later date? Or is the individual community responsible? I think we need to establish that as well.
Our issue in our HOA, have we taken the position that they are, we're knowledgeable that they're not MUTCD compliant, but we're also knowledgeable, all of our streets are private.
Say again the last part.
We're knowledgeable that they're, we're in violation, or we're not up to code with MUTCD, but we're also knowledgeable that our streets are private. I think to answer Gary's question, the issue is private versus public. If it's a public road, any, as I understand, once again, going back to when we did the White Paper, unless and until there's an order that comes out that indicates you have to be immediately up to speed on MUTCD, it's whenever you do the next project on that road that you have to do it all. So that would fall in line with what Gary's kind of saying is that it's the switch. But the position that WCI took for some time, and I thought they gave in on, was is that, well, we're just going to go in there and replace it with a good old Lee County sign, which is the metal, steel metal, ugly-looking sign. And I, we took the position, I know I took the position in meetings with them, you people started Gateway, and you developed this aesthetic-looking sign and post, stay with it. Don't go back and start going backwards on the residents of Gateway. That'll look like crap. So I thought that they agreed to that, and I guess the question is raised then, is that, and a lead into it is, is that are they paying for the conversion to the MUTCD black or green, whatever you call that color, signs that are on their road segments on their nickel? I don't think we're paying for them. I hope we're not paying for them.
My understanding, it was being borne by them.
Yeah, I think what Mr. Tinkle may be asking for me is some clear direction or contention from the board to convey to WCI that we are taking these roads off your hands, you know, it's a community asset, we're taking over the liability, the maintenance, and the cost going forward, so these are the conditions we want you to convey them to us. One of them is, if you're going to switch them all out to compliant signs, consistent with the theme that's already out there, the architectural theme. If that's the direction, I think that's something that April or Cal, Danny can then convey to WCI and make it clear.
In addition to that, but in addition to that too, how about the, has anybody other than Ed gone out there and looked at the condition of these streets that we're suddenly going to take on the responsibility?
We're doing that next Wednesday.
Okay.
Yeah, we're doing that next Wednesday.
Wait, comment. Who says we're suddenly going to take them over? I don't have that recollection. Please help me out.
Oh, I think Dave Caldwell tried to indicate that.
I think we've agreed to that, guys. I think we've agreed to it, but we stipulated conditions with it.
Do you think we agreed to it?
Yes.
I think the board.
Well, we were going to look at, for the POAs to go after them first.
The only one that throws in bills, my recollection was, is that we were going to do it, but it was conditioned. It was conditioned. And then the one that was left up in the air, that's still, as to my knowledge, is up in the air, is Fairway Lakes Office Park. That's kind of no man's land road. But the rest, I thought we had agreed, we would take them over if you go do this, 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 and this, and.
Well, you'll have to show that to me in writing, because I don't have that recollection.
I don't know, Bill. I don't know. But I thought that's what we agreed to.
Fairway Lakes is essentially an office condominium park?
It's, it's.
Commercial-type?
No, there, it's gone. It's abandoned.
I expressed myself that.
That's the one we talked about three or four meetings ago, about the street lights, isn't it?
Yes, yes.
Thank you very much.
It's abandoned.
It's.
HOA abandoned about seven, eight years ago.
They may, but it's conveniently running restaurants and other businesses in there and property management companies.
They may think they do.
So, you know, I don't, I don't think that we're a charity.
I bring it up simply because, not to, you know, create the grief, but if we're going to go out and be doing this stuff, it would certainly be nice to know if we're going to take the position of accepting it with or without those street signs. I certainly wouldn't want to be in the position of saying, yeah, we're going to take it over, and we're going to pick up the signs. Granted, we're going to be doing the signs down the road, but you turn them over to us in a position that we are fresh starting out.
Right, just like Lee County said to us.
Or like we turn them over, or they turn them over to us, and then Lee County or somebody comes in and says, you aren't MUTCD compliant, they're now yours, you go do it. I don't want to get in that play.
You made your point. We're going to have to research that a little bit, because it's not a meeting of the mind.
The last item I have is a, just a quick report on pond testing that we did this week. We just got the results this week. It's, I don't think anything to get alarmed about, but it's something that I brought up several months ago, several months ago, and it certainly concerns me on the number. What you have here is the results of the May testing on three specific weirs. Weir one is the one over across I-75 as it goes into the Six Mile Cypress. Flowway one is where the water comes out of, or comes under the interstate and immediately goes into Pond 132, or the flowway that leads to 132, and represents basically the water that comes into the flowway and into our, our flowway, that's from outside sources. And then weir two is the last weir in Pelican Reserve, right next to the Par Three Hole, just east of Tree Line Drive. The only thing that jumped out on this to me real quick was, all the numbers look good except that nitrites and nitrates. I mean, that thing is 10 times the high limit, and the only water that's coming in there, there's no Gateway water coming in there. It's either coming from the north, or it's coming from the south, either Botanica, the school, or Colonial, that's introducing this, and my guess would be, it looks like, my first impression would be fertilizer and runoff coming in. But my concern is, is that that number is significantly high. We were able to recover from it, as you can see, it dropped from zero, went from 0.016 up to 1.185, and then back down to .018. The buffer and our safety factor is Pond 132. That really provides a good buffer for Gateway, should the county or the state ever adopt TMDLs to where we have a pound limit on discharge. If that's catching all of our problems, then it's a good, in wastewater terms, a good tertiary treatment. But I would hate for this aspect to continue, that we would have a high reading of other parameters that may not be able to be absorbed by our 20-acre pond on 132. So I bring it up just as, it's the first time that we have tested flowway number one, which is a non-Gateway flowway, and this result came out, and it was a little surprising to us.
Hey, Ed, what was weir one?
Weir one's the water, the 25-foot weir, just before it goes across into Six Mile Cypress.
Ed, yes.
Let me show them.
Right about there.
Okay.
This sample we took is right there, and weir two is right there.
Okay.
In other words, everything was copasthetic from the beginning of Gateway up to the edge of Tree Line, which means Gateway and all Pelican Reserve. Then it goes underneath Tree Line, and between Tree Line and the west side of I-75, the additional discharges are Botanica Lakes, Colonial, and the Tree Line Elementary School. So from here to there, the spike was a 1,000% increase. So evidence-wise, it only can be from here, from that part, that is the westerly side of Tree Line to the westerly side of I-75.
With flows continuing now, picking up, and this, for the record also, the flows were tremendous. Our highest flow reading in the past, going over the weir at weir number one, was, to give you an idea, around 12 to 14 inches. We were 19 inches on Monday, going over that weir. The velocity, you know, you guys built that new fish barrier there, and Elle saw it, and we're going to have to get out somebody out there to clean it, because it was just plugged with debris, vegetation, that was really causing a lot of turbulence, but I've never seen anything like that. That water was going through there lickety-split. Lot of volume.
Isn't that why we have a boat? Well, I'm sorry, we're getting rid of the boat.
That's, that might be something that we want to take out there to use to clean that, but I don't know if I need a 15 horsepower, but that would make us get there quickly. But what we're going to start doing is, and Ernesto doesn't have a problem, we're going to go, start going from five to six samples and start testing in this and trying to get a background. Now that we have a flow through, there for a while, we were static, and we were getting water over several of our weirs, because the water levels were down, but about a week ago, all that came to an end with that seven, eight inches of water rain.
So the question.
Anyway, just for your information.
So what are we going to do?
What do you think, Ed?
I think that somebody should communicate with Colonial Country Club, which is a good, good group of people, and just kind of show them the numbers, and just discuss the problem that we're having.
Hey, Ed, what's the, what's the real implications of the high, the nitrates?
Algae blooms.
Huh?
Algae blooms, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, if I may ask you a question, or Danny, Danny, the numbers that show up in these reports are these numbers that would need to be reported in our annual NPDES report, and if so, would they cause any difficulties or raise any flags?
I don't think these would have to be reported in the NPDES, no. These are just internal samples that we're taking for our purpose, so they don't really impact the NPDES. So, no.
I'd like to ask Mr. Newbauer a question. Relates to what you just said about talking to Colonial Country Club, there are, there are other entities just described that are involved in this. Why not just send this to South Florida Water Management?
We had a, we had an, what's the word I'm looking for, Tony? You were involved with. A situation.
A shot across the valve.
A situation. That happened some years ago, first time I ever got to meet Cal T., who happens to also be the district manager for Colonial Country Club. And we had a situation where it was regarding the maintenance of the flowway between that weir at the edge of Tree Line. That Colonial Country Club was of the opinion that we of the Gateway Services District should maintain their portion. I, on the other hand, argumentative devil that I am, was of the opinion that they handled their own part. And so we had a meeting, and it turned out to be a pretty nice meeting, as a matter of fact. And we reached an agreement that they would take the responsibility for their portion. And it was, okay, remember? And so that part went fine. We went there kind of wondering how it was going to go, but their board, yeah, it went fine. So I think maybe it's time to do this, a similar communication.
I would even suggest an inter-local agreement, because what you're talking about is maintenance, what I'm talking about is water quality. I don't think our agreement that we have with them, or understanding that we have with them, address the chemical side of it. At least I don't think so.
I guess, it gets into this thing that I've mentioned over and over again in various items, is we don't communicate enough, and this is another time to establish communication with somebody who is adjacent and in-between the end of one part of ours and the start of the big picture, which is that big part that's on the westerly side of 75. And if you haven't seen it, by the way, Doug, you need to have one of the staff take you out there.
Okay.
See what it looks like.
Sure.
But that'd be my suggestion.
But, but, but you, excuse me for using this word, ignored Marina Bay and the school and the other.
Benita, Benita Lakes. Botanica, minimal amount of actually adjacent properties, the overwhelming majority of it is really the southerly side of it, and that is Colonial Country Club.
Yeah, that was going to get the question that I was going to have is.
But what about all the new construction that's going on in Marina Bay?
Oh, no.
We believe that goes south and crosses in the plantation.
Totally different animal.
Yeah, I think that's different.
Not a part of it.
I don't know where the line of demarcation is that splits the flow.
Don't contribute to it.
So this is, this is the point of clarity that I was looking for.
I believe if I recall correctly, and it's way back, a couple of years, when I did all the research on the permit, I think that does discharge more, some more southerly, there's another flowway, I believe, that the flow from Botanica Lakes, which I think part of Arborwood, goes more to the west.
I think it goes, I think it goes south and goes across that 12-foot box culvert, right, as you come up on the interstate from Daniels, right about the end of that, if you look off to the right, you can see the top of about a 12-foot box culvert, and I believe that's where it all goes in to plantation, and then finds its way over to Six Mile Cypress through Cross Creek.
So here's what I wanted to get across, is, and the point of clarification, so you mentioned there's a couple areas that feed in to that flowway number one, and I just don't have the history on it. Maybe you know if the amount of volume that's coming, that you feel is coming primarily from, I guess it's the Colonial, I think.
North side.
But in order for us to really understand, I think we need to get to root cause, and if we can identify, or do you know those three or four areas and feel comfortable saying that 80% of this contributes to or from Colonial? Do you feel comfortable with that? And also, in approaching Colonial, I would say, hey, almost we want to bring to your attention something that may be affecting, you know, you maybe have it impacting your area, because we're seeing it as a downstream impact with these high numbers. And then clubbing together with collaboration with a quality agreement, or a quality agreement.
That's, that's a good question. We know, just from being out there and observing that, doing mapping, that Colonial has at least four headwalls from the north side that go into that flowway. They may be doing sampling internally, they may be, and that'd be another reason to do what Gary was doing, is just saying, have a talk.
Well, and see what they've got. They might, they might know. Well, how do you know, how do you know it's our problem? You know, there's other contributing, you know, factors.
I don't think you're going to find that kind of arbitrary attitude on their part, and also, their community manager, as compared to district manager, great guy. Absolutely great guy. So I think that what it's going to take is simply some communication, and I'll open some eyes, and I think we'll work together on that.
So I agree with that.
Meeting's a good start.
And if it's possible, can you, can you take this, whether it's your responsibility or for someone else, let me know, to a second level and say, here's, you know, within flowway one, here's the contributors, and, you know, here's where we believe the majority of volume is coming through, so at least we have something a little more than just the quality tests.
We'd probably have to walk both sides and try to find out where all the headwalls are coming in. I don't have any mapping that shows that.
If you could remind me to send you the letter, the memo from back about four or five years ago, when this issue first surfaced on this whole, the various permits that are involved and the history of it, I'll send that to you. In my help.
Go get it.
And then just one last update. We've been working, I've been working with Molly and Elle, and we're in the process of developing the new request for proposals and contract documents for pond maintenance, pond maintenance. Had a good two and a half hour meeting, and we hammered through the general conditions and the opening statements of the specifications. Now we're into the detailed specs, and it's gotten a little more complicated, so we're working on it, but I guess we have a time limit. That was the question I was going to ask you. We didn't know. Do you all want to, on this contract, pre-qualify bidders? Makes a big difference on how we write this out.
Yes. Cal, you have a rec?
Yes, I think that's a good idea.
I think it is.
And they've already done all the work, so.
You feel confident about what the pre-qualifiers will be?
Yeah, I think it's a great way of going. The problem you've got on this is that we're, we're going to have a very detailed specification this time, a very detail, with penalties for not meeting performance criteria. You can get somebody that'll come in here and might, we're going to be up into the real middle six digits, my guess, on what this all is going to cost.
Hold on just a minute. Tony, we have to rewrite any more rules?
For the pre-qualification process? No, sir.
For the, for the, for the pond maintenance standard?
No, the pre-qualification process was in the maintenance portion of the rules, so this, we covered that.
Okay, thank you.
So would you do part of the, the pre-qualification as part of the RFI process? So in order to.
What you end up with this is you end up with two RFIs. One for anybody interested in submitting what certain qualifications you want to pre-qualify people. A lot of it's due diligence work, checking and their ability to do it. We're talking about three, four, $500,000 contract. I don't want Billy Bob coming in here with a boat and one little spray deal that's on his back, bidding on that kind of a contract. Not going to happen. So we'll have to have a pre-qualification specification, then once we've got those guys, then we have our normal general conditions and our detailed specs that they go in and bid, much like you all have approved that Pelican Reserve is doing. We're going to try to take what they've got, make it a little better.
Do you approve pre-qualifications for this?
Yeah, I think we, and we ought to let other people speak on it too, as an action item, that's not on the agenda, if any other members of the public want to comment on that concept of pre-qual, using the pre-qualification.
I mean, you can do that either as part of the RFI, so when you send out your RFI, you have pre-conditions in order to qualify, and you could actually, if you, if you had a good idea of who, you know, if you had three to five that you felt comfortable about, you can include that as part of the RFP with pre-conditions on the front end. So you, you don't have, you know, a pre-RFI, an RFI, and then an RFP.
Well, one of the things that's really helped working on this pond watcher, this pond sampling, is I get to meet those people up there, and you go up there every Monday, or every second Monday of the month, and the door is just constantly swinging with people bringing in samples. And you get six, seven, eight of us, like today, or the other day, I was over there for an hour talking about vendors, and I'm getting a real good list of not only problems that, you know, you think you've got a problem, you're the only one in the world's got it, but you find out the guy right next door to you has got it, but working that type of stuff out, but getting a list of these vendors, but what I'm also finding is a lot of these vendors, for some of these others, they have one, two, five ponds.
Yeah.
When you sit there and tell them you have 69 ponds, they like, why? Why do you want to do that?
Well, let's talk about, maybe, maybe we can talk offline about the right structure for the RFI, RFP.
Yeah, I think, I think the key is if you get a good pre-qualification list, then you know when you put out the detailed specifications, and what the, the hope is, is that the bids come in.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's like on a target, nice, tight bids.
Yeah, I agree.
You don't want one up here and another one a half a million apart.
Hold on just a minute. Board members, let's consider a motion to approve pre-qualification for pond maintenance standards.
Yeah, as long as we don't have to stipulate this, at this point, where that pre-qualification comes in, whether it's the request for information, or if it's actually part of the request for proposal.
Well, and I guess that's part of the, I don't have the rule in front of me, but the, we amended the rule, we said we can either limit it solely to people who are pre-qualified, or we could at times open it up to, you know, pre-qualified as well as other vendors, so I think it needs to be a two-step process.
Yeah, I agree. The pre-qualification, all the ones I've ever done, there's no dollars involved.
That's correct.
It's purely them.
It's a separate standard.
It's a statement of qualification.
It's a separate standard.
So I would do that as part of the RFI.
Yeah, it's like an SOQ.
Would you make that motion?
Yeah, so I make a motion that we include the pre-qualification as part of the RFI process.
For pond maintenance standards.
For the, for the pond maintenance standards.
May I have a second?
It's the request for information.
Request for information, or RFP, request for prices.
Which is typically the first step in, in a vendor or contract selection. You do the RFI, request for information first, and then you take that from a number down to a smaller number, and you do an actual request for proposal, which has requirements, which gets dollars and, and the more finite specifications.
Mr. Chairman, what I would suggest is, once, there's a second to the motion that you ask if any members of the public have, want to comment on this, since it is an action item.
I thought we did that. Any members of the public want to talk about this hearing?
So, Tony, would you, would you just make sure, let's just say, pre-qualification for the, what's the project?
Pond maintenance standard.
For the pond maintenance standard, I would strike out the RFI piece, just so we don't have to.
This should also be part of the minutes of the meeting.
Oh, yeah. If there's no further questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, 4-0.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ed.
Mr. Manager?
That's all I have.
Well, that's terrific. We'll go straight then to the consent agenda, number, item number three on our agenda, if you can bring that up for the audience, please. The consent agenda consists of items A through G, and it has quite a few items in it, and And it has quite a few items in it that I'm kind of surprised that some of them are in the consent agenda because I think we're going to need some individual conversation about them.
I certainly want to talk about items. I have a number of items in three C.
Margaret?
I have A.
Three A?
Oh, and D.
God, give anything you want to specifically talk about on the consent agenda?
Not yet.
Okay. Well, let's start with A. Margaret, approval of the May 19 meeting minutes. Can you direct us to a page number, please?
I can. It's page two of the minutes, page seven of the agenda, next line, item 69. And I'd like to correct the spelling of Jane Shaker's name. I believe Jane is G-A-Y-N-E.
Yeah, that is correct. Thank you. Thank you very much. Is that all you have for item A? Contract spreadsheet memo. Is everybody okay with that? And contract spreadsheet. Everybody okay with that?
I'm trying to spread it out. Yeah, I have it with you.
Please give us a page number.
All right, let's start with page, ten, page seventeen.
Seventeen.
Yeah. The contract spreadsheet. Let's start with the first one. Our lobbying party. And that this thing expires 10/14. What was our conclusion as far as continuing to pay $2,000 for essentially nothing?
Our conclusion, as I recall, was that we canceled it at the end of the.
My recollection is still showing here as expiring 10/14.
Right. And you've made a commitment for a year, so.
I thought there was a discussion about terminating after July 1st.
I thought it was July 1st.
Was it?
That was my recollection.
Whatever that date was.
To the end of legislative session and all reports, is my recollection. We can go back and look at the minutes, but that's what I recall.
I think we ought to go back and look at the minutes.
I thought it was July.
And I suggested that if it's July 1st, then staff be authorized to follow through on whatever needs to be done.
Well, if, if it is July, then I suspect that we are owing Ramba a notice of cancellation.
That's correct.
Thirty day, sixty day, whatever it was. And has that been sent?
So that wasn't sent?
I have, I have not done it.
I'm sorry. You, you lost me there.
If we were going to cancel it on July 1st, we should have sent out the notice too.
Is that what the terms and conditions are, 30-day termination, prior notice?
I don't, not sure. I don't recall there being, I can try to retrieve it quickly, or we can try to retrieve it.
That was my point.
And then who's, and who's responsible? Ops? Okay.
I think it's Calvo.
Okay. Can I move on? Anybody, if anybody's got anything in between?
Yeah, anybody else have anything that they want to say about Ramba consulting?
Or anything on page 17?
Nope, please go on.
Page 18. Soccer Association. Expiration is the 30th. Is that true?
April White, your operations manager. Yes, and we discussed that at one of the board meetings. And what we're going to try to do is, is we agreed that we would try to roll that into just one annual. We've got two running, two agreements running for them, a, a fall and a winter, I believe. And so with, on the, on the backside of the resolution, you know, that we were going to support the soccer association in the complex, I believe we probably need to just roll that into one agreement so we don't have to deal with the intermittent termination dates.
And it needs to align it with why. I mean, our agreement should be standard across, across the service contracts. Annually, what I would do is I would have a master service level agreement that's annual that would renew, and then a statement of work for each season, you know, just to sign off, here's the, you know, because if there's any stipulations within that, with that timeframe, that's what I would do.
Yeah, and so that's on, that's on my radar to get that done before we start up again for the fall.
And we make them effective January, February 1 of each year or something along those lines.
Yeah, or, or a date that corresponds to their play.
Well, master service level agreement is, is what the lease will sign. That's, you know, once we have that in play, it's an auto renewal unless terminated by the board. And then what the statement of work is, is basically terms and conditions for that, for that league season. And that doesn't need any board approval. It's just a matter of, you know, here's, you know, rates have stayed the same, or if there's something new that comes up, we can keep that in the statement of work. But the master service level agreement stays in place. That's annual. That's, that's where the big contract. And then you have literally like a one-pager for the, for the statement of work for each season. That's what I would recommend.
There's further, and that's, we're looking at the probability of $400,000 round numbers just to, to repair the field lights. When do we do the next rate study, since we're always running that at a deficit? And the residents need to know why.
I'm not sure what we've done as far as a rate study in the past. Is that like when we do the general fund model, or do we evaluate the rates then?
No, there, there's, as far as I know, there's never been a rate study. Basically, what you've done is get as much money out of them as you can, always realizing that you're running at a deficit.
We're never going to, we're never going to make a profit on this deal.
Do you want that rate study to be independent or internal? Can we do a first pass internal? So April can maybe?
I thought that we had a fantastic rate study company about different rates. I just wondered if maybe we should, therefore, since someone might suspect that if there was anybody that had interests in these contracts and that they, that being independent is much more transparent.
What's going to be complicating is different facilities offer different amenities, sizes. You could probably do a square footage, you know, come up with a square footage rate. But what I would, what I would recommend first is do an internal rate study. And then if we see that there's high irregularities, then if we want to go spend money outside, that's what I.
That still isn't transparent. And when you say spend money outside, we're running at more than $100,000 deficit every year. So where are we wasting money?
Well, I mean, the, the amenities are the amenities. I mean, I don't, I don't know that we consider them a deficit.
Or a waste of money.
Or a waste of money. That's like saying that landscaping, we run at a deficit because.
No, landscaping is something that, that the entirety buy us into here. There are people, I'm sorry, I'm still talking. There are people that are even of my age, we still exist even at my age, that may not have any real use of the soccer fields within the entirety of the family. Therefore, how much longer do I keep paying for these things with somebody else who doesn't seem to have my interest in mine? So we talk about polling people for other things, but we've never polled the people saying, do you understand how much money we're spending on these things, and are you in support of it?
Are you finished?
I am.
The board decided several months ago that the, the soccer complex and the, and the, the use of this community were terribly important. And voted in open session that we're going to keep this soccer thing going. And the, what we need to do is get the contract out with the soccer association and work with them to see if we can more realistically meet their needs and our needs. I think a rate study is just out of the question. Thank you very much.
Okay, so that's the direction of the board, just work, work with the soccer association on what's available with that?
I would say that the direction that I would say is streamline both, you know, all of our league agreements or our field agreements to an annual contract, a master service level agreement with, with a per-season kind of statement of work. Because you don't really, that way we have a, an annual contract with the availability per season just to have a sign off on what's, you know, how, how much time you're going to use for this season versus, you know, the, the previous season. And then I would add, if you, the direction I would give you is if you can do an internal rate study, just to make sure that we're, that we're in line, that would, that would be what I would suggest.
Okay, when we're talking about a rate study, are we talking about going to other comparable sports complexes and asking them how much they're charging their associations?
No, no, and no. The board decided we're going to have soccer at the Sherman Soccer Complex. And as far as I know, there's only one firm that wants to provide that service. And before we start in on these rather complex items, we, the board needs to have in front of us the, the current contract, which specifies how the income is calculated and, and all of that. Try to, you know, try to wing this thing on a moment's notice. It's just going to get us in trouble.
Well, the, the contract, I mean, you can work on the contract, I think, but one thing that we should be aware of is are we charging, you know, the right amount? You know, keep what we have in place. Nothing changes there, what we're charging today. But we should know, are we, you know, on par with, with what other communities charge? Are we under? Are we over?
We do have.
Some benchmarking data is really what we need.
We have a schedule of, of rates that we charge different entities.
And that's based on, what is, was it based on?
Based on what it was.
I think it was based on previous contracts. But we looked at how much like the lighting costs. When we went through that, it's been a number of years since we've done it, since we reviewed it.
April, just go back on the, on the contract that's currently in force and get, get that in front of us before we do anything dumb.
Okay, and try to leave it open that we could negotiate a different rate upon, I can do a cursory review and see what I can find out, and then bring that to you. And then, right now, we're not doing a formal rate study. I just need to do a cursory review to see if we're being competitive and try to negotiate something, something more.
Person that's running the soccer.
Okay.
Association. Thank you.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Newbar, you have a floor.
Twenty-three propane for the pool. That's the last item that's there on that page. We've gotten rid of the propane for the pool.
I think we're working on it.
Oh, really?
Oh, we haven't?
Where's, where's the question asked specifically?
Propane for the pool. How are we covering with the natural gas?
The update on the TECO project is we are, the engineers have been working on it. They, we originally wanted them to come up the FPNA easement. That did not work on their income model. So they wanted to come up Gateway Boulevard. And we wasn't happy with that because of all of the utilities along the boulevard. So Terry has been working with the engineers, Daniel's engineering, and they've come up with an alternative plan. Tyler, our engineer, sat in on it. It's a plan that we both agree on. And we're running in tandem with a second installation at the brewery. They're getting new equipment. So we're kind of running on, on their time schedule. They're pretty much going to set the, set the clock because they've already ordered new equipment. So they need their, they need their gas. So that puts us where, we've got, our tentative date is we're trying to get it done by October 1st because we know that we've already budgeted for the 2017 and incorporated that discount in the budget. So that's, that's our mark on the calendar right now, is October 1.
Okay, we're on page 24. First item. Technical support and maintenance, $4,000. Are we getting our $4,000 worth? And is this just kind of a never-ending type of thing? Do we just, how frequently do we pay them?
I'm sorry.
I, I missed that too.
I missed the question, I missed the question also.
Go to page 24, look at the first item.
Technical support maintenance.
What is that?
The $4,000 to CUSI is our utility billing software. That's an annual, that's an annual fee. So when we do our billing, every time we have a question, we have to call technical support. That's typical with any, any software application.
Is this the same one that's mentioned later about the problem that we're having as far as the turnoffs and the yellow door thing and all this other stuff?
Um, that's not an issue with, yes and no. It's complicated to get that $10 fee in, into the software and then print it out to put on the door tag. So that created a problem as, as far as the software. I am not certain whether or not that could not be resolved by technical support. I'm not cer, sure of that. But we, we, it, the $10 door tag fee does create a problem getting it into the software.
We'll get to that certainly later. The thing about the heating for the pool, I think, might make organizational sense to put it together with propane, put it side by side rather than a separated thing.
What exactly are we talking about, side by side?
Go to page 24. Look at the second last, create at this document. Heating for the pool, second last item, page 24. Wouldn't it make sense to move that together with the propane thing? So that they're not too like separated items, different pages, et cetera?
I, I guess, I guess we can. We, we've really just, it looks like we've just, you know, got a placeholder in there for, for TECO when it.
Who creates this document?
Diane administers this document. Is there more information that you would like to see on it? Less information? What we are trying to do is, that's why we're creating the summary. We're trying to review it and document our review and point out any things that we see on the summary so you don't necessarily feel compelled to, you know, audit it each time it comes, comes before you. If you have suggestions, then we'll be happy to do that. No? Okay.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, Mr. Huskamp has handed in a request to address the board on soccer fields. I understand that we are well past the audience's public comments. However, Mr. Huskamp is a regular here and has considered, has incurred a lot of his time on various items. If the board does not object, I'd like to allow Mr. Huskamp to talk to us on soccer fields for no more than three minutes. Mr. Huskamp, are you there?
Not yet. I hope I can mention, stay within the three minutes because I have no, no guide. I applaud Supervisor Newbar for bringing the subject up about soccer and the use of, of the monies for various and sundry things. I think some of the things that concern me are that it was mentioned by Supervisor Banks that the agreement that should be put together was, should be automatically renewed. And I would like to suggest that that's not the way that the board should handle it. Personal opinion, remember. I think that the board, anything like that should be renewed on some sort of basis, not that it goes on ad for item. The, I'd like to make a comment also that I'd like to remind the board, I shouldn't remind, I'd like to state that the initial part of the reason for us, Community Development District, was a utility company. And the farther you get from utility company, the more transparent you must be if you're going to keep things going like this, is because of people who. if you're going to keep things going like this, is because of people who are having to foot the bill for things that they have no desire to be into. And second, and lastly, it was mentioned about an internal rate study. I think an internal rate study certainly lacks transparency, given that Supervisor Banks is so heavily involved in the soccer situation. I think he should excuse himself from any discussions along those lines to keep anything, to keep the thing as fair as it can be. Thank you.
Thank you, George.
And I'll just, I'll comment real quick. So when you do an auto renewal, you still have termination for convenience. You have termination clauses. So in a contract where it auto renews, there are stipulations in there that gives the board basically the ability to terminate this contract at any time. So it's not an open guaranteed renewal. And as far as an internal rate study, I wouldn't be involved in that anyway. That would be, that would be ops. So that's reasonable, George.
Mr. Newbauer, I believe the floor is yours again to talk to us about item 3D. You don't think so? 3D is a report from the operations manager that you did not-
Oh, yes. I'm so sorry.
I almost went right on that.
Don't do that. Page 27. Lake 128 washout repairs, it was just a typo. Everyone seemed appreciative. Everybody seems appreciative, that's all. Just a typo. But when you get to, let me know.
Are you on 27, sir?
No, I'm on, I'm, I'm, I'm on 29.
Yeah, it was just a typo. Gary was calling out.
Are you, are you finished with your consent agenda items?
Other than the fact of on page 29, approve the deferral of the Stormwater Pond Site Inspection Report to subsequent month, starting with June report. I don't understand the way that was written. What's going on?
So what we're wanting to do, I've met with staff and Molly and Justin, and we're working on revisions to the inspection reports. The pond inspection report, because those are issues that really don't present an immediate corrective action, what we're asking to do is we're revising the report. And so we want to be able to provide feedback and an action plan to the board. So what we're asking for is, starting with the June report, we want to present the June report to you in July. And then we'll start up with a month, you'll be receiving a report every month, but it will be from the previous month's inspection. So we have, so we have an opportunity as management to sit down and figure out, what is our action plan? What are our constraints? And provide that in the document so you'll have that feedback.
So would that mean that, since you now have an additional month to do that, that these items that do appear on those reports that show something like trash that's still there, that some of us keep inquiring what's been done about it or communications with homeowners, you'd be able on every one of those reports, I'd expect, given 30 days to correct, we shouldn't see anything that's still lingering unless it's something horrific?
Well, I think each one of those comments, I met with staff at length to understand how some of this works. So depending on, the intent of that report is to really monitor the contractors that we're paying to maintain the lakes. And so there's a lot of different issues. Each lake has a separate agenda, if you will, as far as what is going on, the residents, the behaviors, the makeup of the water. So not all of these things are quick resolutions. And so we want to be able to provide that feedback. I can't stand here and tell you that all of those things are going to be corrected in 30 days. It depends on what it's, what it is specifically. But we want to provide you feedback. We want you to have an action plan.
I want to provide you my feedback. When you continuously have these things that say homeowners should be contacted and when inquired and say, okay, when did the letter go out? And no one ever seems to have an answer. No one can ever say that that letter went out so-and-so. Now consistently, if a person sitting in this seat keeps asking those same questions, why wasn't something done? Sooner or later, somebody's got to come up with the answers and somebody's got to be responsible for those answers. So things like that, which I thought I made very clear, but I'll make clear right now, things like that where there's trash, debris, et cetera, that's found during the inspection, I would expect that within 30 days, that type of thing should be corrected. I would expect that somebody should know that a letter has been sent out and communicated. Somebody should knock on the door. There should be answers to that. If it's the other stuff, as far as the numbers, that's where somebody like Ed Tinkle, that's his field of dreams. That's not mine, but what I want is, is if there's something so blatant as that, and they are at times, that that type of stuff should be corrected. And it's never been properly answered up until this point.
And that's what we want to provide. We want to provide those solutions, those corrections, be able to provide that to you in that document. But we won't be able to receive that report, you know, just one day or two days, the day of a board meeting and have those action plans ready and available. So that's why we're asking for the one-month delay. We'll take the June report, bring it back to you in July. We'll have a new format with our plan of action on there and conclusions. And then we'll be able to move forward and every month you'll be getting a report, but it will be from the prior month's inspection. So we can give you that feedback as far as the current status and what we've done to resolve those issues.
So I have just a recommendation. So what I'd like to see is, for that current month, just bring those, I'd like those items identified for awareness. And then, so basically if it's June, you'd have your June items for awareness and anything prior to June, which would be in process with an action plan on it. Because I think the, having the items for awareness is important because if we're a month behind, we might have residents that are either contacting us or we may know of things and we may not know if they're on the list. So I would at least like to have visibility into items that are coming in and these are awareness. We know that there's no action or updates specified for those new items. And then those that are in process, to Gary's point, have, here's the recommendation, the action plan, the date that something action happened on, and if it's completed or closed. Because you might have some issues that may go 30, 60 days just due to complexity, but I think what we want to see-
That's the current, that's the current report now. That's what you have for both the lakes and for the inspections. At the end of the report, there's a status on that, completed or not completed.
And I think what April's saying is that, like on landscaping, for instance, number one here, the dog park, it's got the response and the conclusion. And so when we see this report next month-
We'll just note, there's no action. Okay, right.
Those two lines will be filled in, so we'll know the hole's been repaired.
Two separate issues. We're asking for the month delay on the ponds report. Because those are, those are different, those items have a different scope than the facilities inspection report. The facilities inspection report, we're not asking for a month delay on the facilities inspection report. We are working internally though. We are going to, we're going to change the next report that you get for the, for that inspection report, the facilities inspection report. It will have two months in there. We're showing you that now. We've modified the report. And in the next month, you will have that document plus the June inspection, or the July inspection. And we'll be able to provide our responses in there. But what we've decided on the facilities inspection report is that we don't want, we're not going to let it fall off of the report until there's a conclusion. And the conclusion is going to be, either it's been corrected or depending on what our constraints are, maybe it's budget, maybe it's a bigger process, maybe we have to go out and get proposals, whatever it may be, then it would go to the follow-up matrix that's on the back. So nothing is ever falling off of the report. It's always there. But the short-term corrections are going to be in that report and we're going to have an opportunity to respond. But we're not asking for a month delay on the facilities inspection report.
Okay, just the ponds?
Just the ponds, because that's a different, different scope. Those are more long-term corrective actions. So we didn't think that it would be, that would be missing a whole lot of information to go one month.
Do you want to go through this?
What's that?
When do you want to go through this?
I think it's on the agenda.
Is it on the agenda?
No. Well, it's on the agenda for distribution, but they haven't responded yet. And so this is what she's saying, the next one will have the response plus the new one.
Right. The ponds, the ponds report, are you talking about the ponds report?
No, this was the one that was passed out today.
For 16 pages.
The facility-
Justin reported.
I have that. Wait, we just reviewed it? I might, I will probably be able to answer your question tomorrow.
So, but I'm fine with the, with the pond delaying a month, so.
Mr. Newbauer, if you give up your-
No one else has any questions on this?
If you give up your time for just one moment.
For you, me, no, go ahead.
April, would you look at this first page with me for just a second?
Okay.
Far be it from me to tell you of your job. But if I were doing it, where I have a hole outside the fence for the small dog area on the east side that should be filled in, by the town that takes the picture and write that up and get it ready to send to the board, I could have filled the darn thing in and been done with it.
And so why isn't it?
It is done.
Oh, it is done?
It's corrected now, yes. But Anthony does not, Elle and Molly walk together to do the ponds report. Anthony and Justin do not walk together to fix these things. The report comes into Anthony, but that is, that has been corrected.
Apparently I haven't made myself clear all these, all these years. I think what Bill's saying, we may actually finally have one thing we agree upon. That something like this should never have appeared. And somebody that's managing a staff of people, that staff member should know that if they can't figure out how to avoid these kind of things happening or all of the rust to the equipment, which we seem to keep throwing away, $28,000 playground equipment sets. Gone through two of them since I've been on this board, merely due to rust and deterioration and no maintenance. If we have somebody whose task, for example, is this maintenance individual and we spent 20, how many thousand dollars on a van to make sure that that was all done, how are things like this, what was this electrical item? That is a point of danger and needs to be covered and can't somebody kind of take this on as a team member and say, this is my task, these are my areas, and I'm going to take some pride in it?
Yes, and I have been meeting with staff and we are coming to an understanding of why some of these things haven't been dealt with proactively. I think part of it is feeling or understanding, possibly incorrectly, that no budget is available. And so the new philosophy is, we're reviewing our budget and if there's budget there, we're going to fix these things. And so it's going to take a while for us to actually see the effectiveness and turn this stuff around. But like the pool, the tables at the pool, the pool is an issue with rust. There's rust all over that place. So we have to decide, we've got some resin picnic tables at the soccer complex in the parks. So we have to decide, are we going to get those types of tables at the pool? We have to evaluate how the pools are utilized over, or the tables at the pools are utilized. These are things, these are expenditures, that part of the issue is staff does not have the authority to spend any money. So all of the purchases have to come through my desk. We like to get proposals. The current staff has never replaced those tables at the pool, so we need to look into it. We don't have an asset list that we can go to. Most organizations have a capital asset list and I can go to that list and I can look to see when those tables or this equipment was purchased. I can see what that historical dollar amount was. If it was 10 years ago, I can adjust it by CPI index and I have a ballpark figure of what it's going to cost. We don't have that right now.
That's my point in another way. That's a great accounting and that's a valuable asset, but that's not an operations thing. These legs that are showing all this rust that have never had one spray paint of Rust-Oleum on them.
Is that at the pool?
Yeah. I mean, we've spent 20, I'm looking for the last figure count, 20-some thousand dollars on a brand-new van. We can't have a can of Rust-Oleum there. We can't have a bucket.
Well, I think that it's-
That has some crushed stone to fill in the holes.
I think probably it's an assumption that we're making if you say that it's never been repaired before. I know the doors at the pool, as far as the rust on the doors, have been patched. We've bondoed, we've painted, the rust comes back. So I think just to assume that there's rust on something now and that we have never fixed, attempted to fix it, I don't think that that would be an accurate statement.
If you look at the picture.
Which picture?
Before the tables were begging to have rust?
Yeah.
Begging, yeah. I think that's a typo.
That's great. But are you telling me, are you telling me that part of the standard thing that the person does would be if they walked around and they looked at it on a regular basis and saw that and they had that can of Rust-Oleum onboard that 20-some thousand dollar van, that they wouldn't, couldn't, shouldn't spray that?
I'm not, Mr. Newbauer, I'm not sure that a can of Rust-Oleum is going to, is going to actually fix that rust.
Let's not, let's not go any further there. Part of what Gary's getting to, I think, if I may, is that we need a whole change in the way and the thought processes that some of our staff use.
We are working on that.
And traditions are awfully hard to change and it takes some time. But if it's done right, we should have a report like this at the half or a third of size shortly.
Yeah, and I think there's, you know, one of the things I think Gary's trying to get to is we need a maintenance schedule. We need better roles and responsibilities within the functional areas, which would include, if this is your area, you're responsible to make sure X, Y, and Z are done. If there's a hole in the fence, your job, that's your area, figure out how to get that hole filled. If there's a parking bumper that has a mark on it, that, those are just do-its. Get a can of paint, spray paint it. If it's more severe than that, then it's a service ticket where there might be an expense. But we need a maintenance routine, we need better accountability from the staff and we need to, so some of these are just do-it items. You know, if the drain's clogged, okay, send staff over there to clear it out. And I think that, I know, because I've talked to you, you're working on this type of stuff. And I think that's what the board wants to hear is, yes, these things, the way we've been maintaining them and servicing them in the past is not efficient, it's not cost-effective, and that you're working on a plan to revise and redefine how we're-
We are working on a plan. Part of that is reallocating the resources. I agree with Mr. Newbauer that the transit van has been underutilized. So the transit van, and I might as well just let you know now that we are struggling with vehicle allocation. We have, Elle can't go out to the field on a regular basis because she doesn't have a vehicle available to her all the time. So what we've been doing is, we're working on, we've gone through the shop, we scrapped some stuff, we have a trade-in value on the tractor, we're working on selling the boat, and we want to buy another gator. Because we want to put Anthony in a gator. He will be closer to the ground, he will be able to see things, he will be able to inspect the buildings, inspect the pathways, inspect the landscaping. And he's going to, we are working on taking the dust off of the four-hour inspection trip that Elle used to do back in the day, before we grew and got bigger. And so we're revising that inspection report, so four hours a week. He'll, I want him out on the gator, inspecting, riding up and down the pathways, looking at the, you know, monitoring the activity with Mainscape. We met with Mainscape this morning for an hour, an hour and a half, maybe more, talking about the issues in, you know, in Gateway. We have a lot. It's a huge area. And there's always going to be something on that inspection report because we can't be everywhere all the time. The dog, the hole, we don't know when the dog dug it. It could have been this morning. There's a pile of debris- There's a pile of debris in the field over by the fun park. It literally must have, it was put there that day, and it was gone that day that Justin took the picture. He just happened to be there, and it was from, it was from the neighbors, had cut down some trees, I guess.
Yeah.
And piled it up there, and a truck was coming to get it. So, it's, it's a picture, it, it isn't always there all the time. Um, we do have staff checking the parks, we've been working with the pool staff, the pool staff has stepped up, the part-time employees, they've been doing a better inspection at the soccer complex. Um, we're struggling with hours at the pool, at, at the pool facility, because I've done that, we're, we're stretching, uh, the thirty-hour limit, and so, you know, we are making changes, and that's one of the reasons why I wanted to put an operations manager report on the consent agenda, so you get them in advance, you have an opportunity to contact me if you need to discuss something, um, instead of me just coming up here at the end of the meeting and, you know, trying to just spit out a bunch of things that are going on during the week.
I think the board's deterred enough, and it's pretty well on a green. Uh, the chair would like to have a motion to approve the consent agenda items three A, B, and G. May I have a motion?
Don't move.
I have a second.
Second.
I have a second. You have any further conversation that's needed? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, vote, four zero. Thank you very much. Uh, item four is discussion items, number four A is Hammock Cove, two B, one turnover approval, yah, yah, yah. Uh, and there he is. Please help us out.
Uh, for the record, Danny Nelson, Tetra Tech District Engineer. Uh, this is essentially for all of the assets that will be dedicated, taken by Gateway. Um, they've been completed, essentially consists of the potable water, uh, the drainage, the majority of the drainage, not road drainage, um, and then the sewer system. So, this does not include the roads or the irrigations, the irrigations behind the master meter. So, this, uh, includes the primary utilities, water sewer, and, uh, the majority of the drainage. So, we've reviewed this, we have no issues, and just looking for approval.
Yeah, and part of the approval request that, uh, handed out to the resolution, the, uh, the plat provides that the, the lakes and water management system, that the district only has responsibility after accepting the facilities and adoption of a formal resolution, and that's what this resolution will do. In addition, there, uh, we've had some comments on their utility facility, their bill of sale for the utility lines, and they, they'll be making some changes to those, and that's usually done at the staff level. We would ask that the board, as part of this package of authorization approval, approve the adoption of the resolution two thousand sixteen eleven that was handed out, as well as authorizing staff to finalize the conveyance documents for the utility lines and the track B, which is a conservation track. Did I leave anything out, Danny or April? And the, uh, the acceptance is subject to obtaining certification, approval by South Florida Water Management District of the construction completion certification, which
They've submitted, it's just, it's in the process.
Mr. Newbauer, please.
Two things. Page, I always want another page, fifty-one. Paragraph three. Please note, this recommendation for approval is based on limited site inspections by Tetra Tech. What more do you need to do, is my first question? Do you need more time there? And that leads into my second question.
No, I mean, all this is clarifying is that we were not on-site full-time while construction was taking place, and these, these improvements are underground. So, we cannot, we cannot see physically what is there today, we can only see what we see when we're in the field. So, it's just caveating that.
Okay.
This was just partial.
Actually, I have three questions.
Okay.
Having just mentioned that, wouldn't this then be the proper time for the GIS work to be done to know where, instead of an as-built, as-discovered, as we have had in the past here at Gateway?
The, um, the contractor is required to, um, to have a surveyor document exactly where the utility is, where everything is. So, moving forward, that's not an issue. It's, it's the old stuff that, you know, Ed was referring to earlier with the GIS. So, we have that, that information as part of it.
Okay. And here's my last one. I believe that Gateway CDD has, for quite some period of time, been paying for Tetra Tech's time to go and certify all this stuff, instead of the developer themselves, who's giving it to us, paying for that time. And I believe that our resolution was that the developer, and in the permit criteria manual, which I had my sticky fingers in, um, states that the developer is supposed to be paying for their time. Why should we be paying for something that we're be, being handed? Therefore, I'd like to make sure that we all agree here on the board that WCI is going to be sent a bill for Tetra Tech's time for this, not only now, but in the future.
Before I answer that.
Okay.
I'd like to know how you know that this is WCI. I have read this stuff from stem to stern, and unless I missed it three or four times, I can't find anywhere in any of these documents that WCI is identified as the developer. Can you help me out?
That's a good point. It, it is, uh, but that's a good point, it's non-identified in there. But, to, to, to Mr. Newbauer's point, regardless of who the developer was, that is actually absolutely correct, that is a requirement of the permit criteria manual.
Well, you're saying he is correct. Are you saying that your work is going to be paid for by the developer?
We have no mechanism to, to bill the developer. Our bill goes to Gateway.
Say again?
It's our mechanism.
Oh, no, wait, time out.
Our, we, we perform our work through, through Gateway. We do ours, we document what it is, and then the developers should be invoiced by Gateway for the work that's performed. And that's from anything that's associated with development, from the reviews all the way through the inspections.
Mr. Chairman?
Hold on, just, just one second. It may not be terribly pertinent to this discussion, but give me a rough idea how many dollars we're talking about.
I, I would not have a clue on this one.
Four thousand dollars, fourteen thousand?
No, 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 you're probably in the, from beginning to end for the inspection, you're probably in the one to two thousand dollar range. From beginning to end, from development review all the way through, you're probably in the, the, the three to four thousand dollar range per, per typical development.
And you do have a work order accounting process, I presume so that.
Yes, we.
You can go home and get that down to the dollars and cents, right?
Yes, and we keep a separate task for the, for our general work that we do with, uh, with Gateway. It's based on your budget by your, um, your funds, oh, oh, one, and then how they're individually broken out. You don't have a funds rightfully for the development process, development review. So, we have a completely separate task for that, so it's not broken into the, any, any of the other funds, oh, oh, one, oh, three, or any of those. It's specific, and then we identify what development, uh, component we worked on, whether it was a plat review for whatever.
If, if Mr. Newbauer had not just mentioned this, uh, what mechanism is in place for the CDD staff to know that they should bill WCI, also known as developer, for four thousand dollars or some other amount?
The, um.
It's not going to be charged to us.
The, um, when they submit a permit application, I'm not sure, I can't tell you exactly, I haven't seen all of them, but they submit a permit application. I believe they do submit an estimated, uh, amount up, upfront. Um, we actually, I have in, in the past, when, when both, when Mr. Conell was here and before that with Al Abdo, um, prepared a complete summary list of, of all of these and broke it out by invoice and showed, uh, exactly what they should be, um, invoicing the developer, and whether or not that actually ever took place, I'm, you know, I'm not sure. And I could certainly sit down with April and do the, and do the same thing.
So, would you invoice us, and then we re-bill, or are we saying that the, the developer would be invoiced directly?
No, we would invoice you.
Okay.
You would pay us, and then you would.
So, well, I think what Bill's saying is, we need, we need some notification in that invoice saying that this is a, you know, X code or whatever, just so our accounting can say, okay, yep, this is a bill to us, but we have to make sure that we kick off
All of, all of our invoices have that.
It has a stated on this.
It, it's broken out separately.
And Gary, what you were talking about earlier as far as bringing this up, where, where's that stipulation, where's it?
Read the permit criteria and.
Okay, and that, and WCI would be aware of?
All the, the construction of the lake banks, all of that, we changed every bit of that.
They're, they're aware of it, yes.
They're aware, okay.
Yes.
I mean, it sounds like a no-brainer to me.
Okay.
I'm good.
I actually had that same line underlined in my book, limited site inspections, because that was a question that I had. And also, you talk about the documentation provided by WCI, and that's the only place that WCI is anywhere.
Oh, you do see it in there?
Where'd you find it?
I, I got the question, what documentation did the CDD receive? Because in previ, with previous turnovers from the developers, we've gotten, we found we ended up with limited documentation and limited inspection reports, and so, do, have they actually provided anything to us?
Yes, they, yeah, and, and, in, in the past, um, I think why you got a, a lack of documentation was there really wasn't a defined, very well-defined, um, documentation package. Um, so, everything that's required by the permit criteria manual, um, there's a checklist, and, you know, we've gone through that. So, we can certainly provide that to the board, but I don't think you want to get involved with the nuts and bolts, but.
I just wanted to make sure that we'd gotten them like the, they had to do, according to our manual, they had to do some inspection reports and turn those in.
Yeah, there's testing reports, there's, um, uh, there are inspection reports, there's the actual as-built documents, there's signed and sealed, um, survey data, there's electronic files of that that we can then turn over for GIS. So, yeah, everything that's required by the permit criteria manual, they, they've provided, or we wouldn't even consider it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Danny, and this, I think we're, the video is also in that, because we're not required.
Yes, and, and, yes, and anything that's, um, anything that's, that's performed because of some of the issues we have with the stormwater in the past, they're required to, uh, perform a video of the stormwater system. So, that's, that's all, all included as well, and we sit there.
And they've already done that?
Yes, and, and we sit there and review every last one of them, so.
Thank you.
Where's your microfilm?
What's microfilm?
Gone away.
Micro fish.
Mr. Attorney, uh, having heard all of this, and it's basically the fact that this resolution two thousand sixteen dash eleven does not, I don't think, designate WCI as the developer. Do you believe that we are ready to proceed, or do we need, uh, some amendments, additional work, et cetera, et cetera?
I, I believe, as Zuckerman is the actual developer of the property, I think, I believe.
In the resolution?
Uh, it doesn't address it in the resolution, it just addresses the plat. Let me look at the plat real quick, uh, as to who, uh, Lynx Zuckerman at Gateway LLC is the entity.
Yes.
That's the entity that platted and constructed Hammock Cove, and that's the entity that's conveying the various facilities, um, is Lynx Zuckerman at Gateway LLC. Now, whether or not WCI is a member of.
I, I don't know what.
Is that also being sold off to, to the board?
That I do not know. When we, when the documents are provided for the bill of sale for the facilities and the deed for the track B, there will be an owner's affidavit signed by the appropriate entity, which I believe is Lynx, uh, Lynx Zuckerman at Gateway, and there, there will be an owner's affidavit and an updated owner's and encoverance report. I will make sure of that. And then I think it's appropriate, too, that if the board approves the, uh, adoption of this resolution, acceptance of the facilities, that the chairman be authorized to sign the resolution after receipt by the district of the funds associated with the engineering services review, uh, of, of the plans and the construction. And then I think in addition, I don't know, April or Mr. Tinkle, if you want to address the items attached in the letter from, uh, Gateway Greens, or that issue involving Gateway Greens, just so we're.
Uh, Mr. Tinkle and I work together, um, we, we, they planted some coconut palms out by the pond, and so, we wanted to research if that was going to interfere with the storm system, and then they also have some along the sidewalks, um, in the areas that, you know, close to the areas where we ma, maintain that. Um, so, what we did is, we worked with Mr. Tinkle, he's, he's aware, they're taking over the responsibility for the landscaping. Um, they received a certification letter from Lee County, where Lee County certified that. So, basically, we were just trying to do some risk mitigation for, for the future, and, um, Tony suggested that we make sure that we document that as part of this package, and that was, that was the documentation that's behind the, the resolution that you were provided. So, we just wanted to make sure that it was formally documented. Mr. Tinkle, do you have anything to add?
Gary, do you have anything else on this item?
No, I, I just have a question, though, and I, I need to segue, while my mind is still thinking about, did we go through item three G and not discuss it at all, the Stone Grip thing?
Yes, we, we went through it in the cut, or in the center cut. When we get finished here, we can go back to it if you would.
I've got a couple of questions, please.
But can we?
Yeah, oh, fine, I'm good.
Okay, we're going to finish this one for thirty, but.
I think we just saved us four thousand bucks, thanks.
Yeah, uh, you're not going to forget to send that invoice, right?
We'll get with April and go through, it's, it's, you know, it's accumulated over multiple invoices, so we'll get with her and document exactly what that is.
Okay. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, the board, you have in front of you the resolution number two thousand sixteen dash eleven that has been prepared by our legal counsel, and he has recommended it to our approval. I have a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion to approve, but I think he said that the acceptance of the fa, of this should.
Well, execution would be upon receipt by the district of the fees to reimburse the district for engineering services.
I mean, that's part of my motion.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And with that, as part of the motion, Doug, may I have a second?
Yes, second.
Any further conversation? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, vote, four zero. Thank you very much. Now, Gary, would you, uh, direct us back to?
Two questions.
Item?
Page thirty-one. Page thirty-one, which is under three G. And it's just, first question is, is there any requirement for the contractor that's mentioned, um, to have background checks on their staff?
Yes.
Is it in here?
I don't know if it's in here.
I couldn't find it.
I do know that Alert does background checks on all of their employees.
Uh-oh, there's somebody moving around. Careful, watch them.
It's, it's not in there, and I guess the question is, if it's, uh, if you want to put that language in the assignment.
I personally would strongly recommend, since we're taking on some additional allegiance and responsibility with this, that, that would give us, make us sleep better at night, and also give us certain protections.
Give us comfort.
I certainly hope a security company is doing background check on their boys.
So, I think it should be our requirement if we're taking on this responsibility? You know, it's nice that somebody tells me, but periodically, things get missed, like four thousand dollars. So, uh, I think that since we've got this in front of us right now, might be a good idea to insert that language in the contract.
Mr., excuse me.
Right.
Uh, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir.
When we accept the assignment of this contract, which we're doing primarily for tax avoidance.
You should mean no sales tax exemption purposes. Term avoidance.
That's what I said.
I try to avoid the term avoidance.
Are we, in fact, opening ourselves as a Gateway Services C D D to potential liability that we would otherwise have?
The district, by virtue of engaging in access control activities, at the present time, has authorized the, uh, master association pursuant to the operations agreement between the district and the master association to engage, you know, a vendor to perform those services. This would be in a position of, as opposed to the district contracting with the association, and they contract with the vendor, we are contracting directly with the vendor by virtue of this, and it's an independent contractor status. In my opinion, we have no greater liability than we would have by virtue of the arrangement that we have currently with the association, except to the extent that the association would have to hold us harmless from any claims, you know, losses or costs resulting from anything untoward occurring by the security vendor. That's the only thing that will be missing, we won't have the association indemnification, we have the contractor's indemnification. So, I don't think there's any greater liability or exposure.
And page three's got where they indemnify.
And it is not atypical, it is normal. In fact, many times, some, some CDDs have access control in-house, some contract directly with the vendor and some contract through a master association.
Yeah, what, I'm, I, I don't mind telling you, when I found out that, that assailant in Orlando was a security guard at a gated community in, I forget where.
Fort Pierce of Jupiter, yes.
Fort Pierce.
Actually, the county courthouse.
The same company does the county courthouses, that's correct. They do the Cary County courthouse too.
Yeah.
GS1.
Yeah.
I'm going to just say it this way, my bowels got a little loose.
I understand.
When I read about that, okay?
Yes, sir. I understand.
So why are we fighting over the fact that simply inserting the fact of the requirement for background checks?
I had the sense the board was okay with that.
Say again?
I had the sense the board had a consensus to insert that.
I'm just confirming, reaffirming.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're good.
Then I'm done.
Okay.
So I guess the motion would be to authorize the assignment with an insertion of language that the, uh, access control vendor or APS has to perform background, appropriate background checks to satisfaction of the district on all employees.
How frequently should they be done? Anybody have any feelings?
Well, at least upon employment. I would say certainly annually on reemployment.
All right, so now we've-
It's, it's typical to do three years, but in this case, um, I mean, turnover, uh, within that type of businesses is definitely less-
They're right in your community with your kids.
Yeah.
Okay?
Okay.
So how about initially an annually? Very good. Good with that?
Anybody good with that? Anybody not good with that?
No, I'm fine.
Okay, Mr. Attorney, how do, what do we have, how do we have to proceed? We need to amend this contract?
I would say motion to approve the assignment of contract with additional language to require that the, um, access control vendor perform background checks with, upon all employees upon their employment and annually thereafter.
Everybody okay?
Um, do we stipulate state or federal?
Uh, we-
It's your community, go for it.
Do you have any?
I will say the most comprehensive background check that they can perform.
Okay.
I'm not sure what access the federal government will give to.
Uh, motion to approve that amendment to the contract?
Don't move.
May I have a second?
You've got to be kidding.
Second.
It's your community. No?
A second, yeah.
All right.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Pose. Four zero. Thank you very much and thank you for bringing that to our attention. I am trying to get back to my agenda real fast to see exactly where we are, if you'll excuse me.
Five minute break.
Four B. You want a five-minute break?
Sure.
We'll take a five-minute break and do that.
I kept saying, I figured it was.
He's just thinking of Sam. We got a partner, I didn't know foul.
The tide is, the tide is.